Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. This is the Sierra Vista Area Chamber of Commerce 2022 City Council Forum and Mayor of Debate. We're happy to see all of you out here tonight, getting informed, learning from your candidates, and going through the polls in forums, so we appreciate that. I'm Melanie Edwards Barton, I'm the CEO at the Sierra Vista Area Chamber of Commerce. And I want to give you a little information about the chamber. We are a 501(c)(6) organization, we are not funded by the government, and we are not partisan. And I see the lights coming up. So our mission is to promote business and provide leadership for the improvement of the communities that we serve. The chamber is filming this event tonight, no one else is filming this event this evening. However, tomorrow you'll be able to share this video or on social media, so check our social media channels, and you'll be able to watch it and share it tomorrow. At this time, I ask you to please silence your cell phones. And I would like to welcome our dignitaries and leaders in the area. Of course, the honorable Mayor Miller. Mr. Gregory Johnson, council member. Ms. Martha Mesner, council member. And from the Sierra Vista Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, we have our chairperson, Ms. Brenda Pettit. Mr. Jason Bolway, board member. Mr. Brandon Jeter, board member. Mr. Wallace Ricks, board member. Ms. Jennifer Sorenson, board member. And Mr. Tim Timson, board member. And Mr. Larry Saunders, Southern Arizona Division Manager for K E and G. Dr. J D Brothwiler, President, Cochees College. And Dr. Randy Roth, President, and the Wachita fifty. My apologies that you snuck in, and I missed you sneaking in, we didn't have an R S B P list, so thank you to everyone that has or is attending tonight. At this point, I would like to welcome Larry Saunders to the stage. K E and G is our sponsor for this event tonight, and Larry Saunders is going to have a few words. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Real quick, K E and G, the 50 year celebration this year. We've been in business since 1972, start right here, it's your business. We currently celebrating it all year long, we have a division in Tucson, and we just opened up a new office in El Paso. So we're pretty tight. We are 100% employee owned, and Carol and George started the business in '72, was able to sell it to us, and started selling it to us back in about 15 years ago. So we are currently 100% employee owned, and we appreciate it, enjoy working here locally. And by the way, I'm Larry Saunders with the Southern Arizona Division Manager. Thank you.
So we'll begin the city council forum shortly, but before we do that, I want to let you know that in between the city council forum and the mayor of debate, we will have a 15 minute break. I want to talk a little bit about differing opinions in politics. As we stated, we are nonpartisan, we understand and appreciate differing opinions, however, we respectfully request mutual respect from the audience and from the participants this evening. This is a debate and a forum between the candidates, so if you are interested in talking with candidates, there will be time afterwards that you can do that. Tonight's event allows our audience members time to hear directly from the candidates so that they go to the polls in the forums. We have compiled a list of questions for this evening for the city council members and the mayoral candidates, and we use some of the questions that were posed on our website. However, there were quite a few questions, we didn't have time to, we don't have time tonight to use all of those questions, but they assured our candidates will receive a copy of all of those questions before they leave this evening, so they will know what's on your mind. Very important. Moderators this evening, Jennifer Sorenson, publisher with the Harold Review Media, and myself are your moderators for this evening, so any repeating questions or allowing additional time for direct responses, all of that is up to the moderators. So now we're going to get to why you're here. So we are going to begin with the city council forum, and I will introduce the candidates in alphabetical order. First one, William Bennin. Mark Rodriguez. Carolyn Humphrey. And Kevin Weston. Okay, we are going to cover some of the rules for tonight, so you understand the forum process. There's going to be one question per candidate, no responses from the other candidates. A roll of the dice did determine the order of the individuals answering the candidates answering the questions tonight. Questions will be pulled randomly by us, the moderators. The moderator will ask the question, that candidate will have 90 seconds to respond. We will then move to the next candidate and pull a different question and so on. We have four rounds with one question each. And now he's going to start with the first question. Questions are in the basket. So, random questions. So by roll of the die, the first question will be given to candidate Weston. Sierra Vista businesses seem to have challenges recruiting professionals. What ideas do you have to make our area more desirable?
That question was designed for me before when talking to some of the, some of the council persons within the city hall. How can we improve our city before the 501(c)(3)'s? So it's, it's, it's been a little bit of a twist in terms of how we can look at how we can leverage the income and increase in our city so that the 501(c)(3)'s can be Tier One or Tier Two here. So we have to look at a lot of things other than how can we improve. There's surveys that you can take, there are properties to be looked at, there's a whole bunch of things that we need to look at in the sense of the city needs for this city to keep its personality as we grow the city to become a better city.
Thank you, candidate Weston. The next question is for candidate Mark Rodriguez. How would you be the charge to help support the community members during the substantial inflation increase?
Thank you. Well, at the city level, there's a lot of things we can do when it comes to things that are affecting us right now when it comes to gas prices, we get a lot of those questions. But inflation hurts us all locally when it comes to prices of things like groceries and things like that. The main thing is getting stuff to us, right, Sierra Vista. So making sure that we have good roads and infrastructure built so that infrastructure can to and from my tenants, working with our partners, in terms of smokeouts, they have some money coming to the border operations there, to make sure that we have flow east and west as well through our city, to help keep the prices down for everybody here at home, and making sure that we rely on our citizens for information input that we can get from you guys, and whatever you see that, that we can adjust at the city level. Like I said, a lot of those things when it comes to inflation are above our level. What we can affect locally is prices of, we can talk about local business owners, right? Some of the things are bigger companies, grocery stores, things like that. We have the infrastructure to make sure they come down, keep their prices down, they can keep your prices down as well locally.
Thank you, candidate Rodriguez. The next question is for candidate Humphrey. Besides loving our community, as we know you each do, why are you running for city council?
Oh, but that's my answer, so, no, that's okay. I'm running because this is the best way I know how to take care of the people and the place that I love, is to continue serving on the city council, working for our community and with the community, in making the best choices that are based on our community's priorities, making those priorities always come first when making decisions on the city level. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Humphrey. The next question is for candidate Bennin. Do you feel that Sierra Vista faces water issues? If so, why, and what would you do to address that?
Thank you. Yes, everyone in Arizona faces water issues. The Sierra Vista long know, they, one of the biggest things we've done on council already is the partnership with the county, Cochees, and B L N, to make sure any decisions being made within the county or within Cochise County is made as a partnership. We can't handle that situation alone. So as long as partnering, we have to say or sit at the table, they can't come in, B L N, the residents can't come in behind us, and make decisions arbitrarily that affect us and Sierra Vista and the surrounding area. So while we do have water issues in the area, there's way to maintain that and ensure and afford we have enough water, in order to develop, like we need to develop, recharge stations, like the environmental protection area, things that we do for Sierra Vista to help that cause and help us retain that water that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Bennin. The next question is for candidate Weston. What do you currently do to support and advocate for locally owned businesses, and how do you want to support them long term?
Well, developing strategies and messing with the organizational mission for businesses here, I'm already supporting certain, certain businesses within Sierra Vista by going to them, talking with the owners themselves. And then just developing what they are saying on how the city should grow and what is needed within the city from their perspective, and not just from local businesses, but also constituents in the city too, and setting down a group of them, and we all have had some talks with them, around robin type of situation, and this we are better understanding about how to post certain things within the city, on the council, and same with the council that's already done, and joining in what they have done is how can I add my expertise to improve what is already been made as a public issue. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Weston. Next question again for candidate Rodriguez. As a city council member, how will you work to educate and influence other members of council to move your initiatives forward?
Thank you. I think I've been fortunate this last year and three months that I've been on council to be with the people to my left and right, and the people that aren't here as well or that are down there. We talk a lot, obviously, on our work sessions, we're very, very involved in our work sessions. If you haven't been to one, I recommend you look at them, they're on Tuesdays before our meeting, right? We do all the hip and hiccups and those meetings, we talk a lot there, so that way it goes over to the public, we take feedback, and we're on council together, we're not always going to agree, and I understand that, but I'm definitely going to have all the facts, if I'm putting something out there that I want to propose, or maybe a direction I think we should go in, I'm going to draw my homework and all the facts out to see everything else, and it'll be available certainly on council, and then to put out hope as well. And like I said, I'm fortunate to be on a good team, we're not always going to agree, we shouldn't, we should all have our own initiatives, our own passions, our own things like that, but like I said, to this point, we've been very fortunate to have a council we have to go on forward, as I was saying.
Thank you, candidate Rodriguez. The next question is for candidate Humphrey. If there were an opportunity for a significant improvement, i.e. outdoor water park, recreation facilities, convention center, better amenities, would you be willing to increase sales tax by half percent to pay for that? If not, how would you pay for it?
So, no, I'm not a big fan of raising sales tax. There are other ways to increase our revenue other than doing that to get these amenities, and one is something that we're actively working on, and that's bringing in more tourism, boost sports tourism, increasing the volume of sales, and so we're still getting more sales tax, we're just not having to increase it on the people that shop here day to day. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Humphrey. Next question for candidate Bennin. Due to the size of our community, Sierra Vista and Cochise County are most likely not a viable option for businesses like Red Lobster, Sam's Club, and Costco. What are three types of businesses that you feel you would be able to recruit to add to our quality of life?
So first, I kind of want to disagree, I think we can't bring those types of businesses. We just have to build an environment, I think we're doing that right now, that enables them to succeed once they get here, and that's what they're looking for. But some of the other businesses that I think should come here, would thrive here, is like a Dave and Buster's, somewhere we can actually use our youth that we have in the community, and it shows in our sports tourism, when people wanting to do the tournaments and all the things that go on, is get those youth involved, get something here for the youth like a Dave and Buster's. I think another thing that would work, and I'm a proponent of, is building our own businesses and growing. I like to use Jay's Kitchen, she started off with a competition in the mall, she had a food truck, she won the mall for one year, turned that into a smaller business, Jay Bobo's, combined them to one of the biggest restaurants we have in Fryable, Ohio. So that's the things we can do, is encourage those to have a holistic approach, from crater to grave, if you would, these businesses starting off in Sierra Vista. So instead of going out for those businesses to come, grow them ourselves. Another great business we can bring here that brings top level jobs is using the forces and the strength of Cochees, but on the civilian side of the house. We can do stock and security, we can have remote locations here, that would bring at least disposable income if not the company itself. So, I thank you.
Thank you, candidate Bennin. Candidate Weston, question? During this election process, what has been the issue most addressed to you by community members, and how will you address it if voted into office?
The most that I have come in contact with is the budgeting and how the budget is going to spend. I don't have a great deal of knowledge, taking it from a balcony view, seeing the city grow and how they're maturing, but that is one of the areas in which I've been hearing a lot. But I would love to use my expertise and background, experiences in budgeting, and find out where we can make waves, or follow what they already have, or to improve, or even to bring in grants or funding for the city. So one of the things that I'm hearing again is that budgeting is a very sticky portion because it's money involved in trying to build a business, and how we do that, we don't, the city doesn't have a lot, but they do have some, but I would love to know how they're spending it in the correct ways. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Weston. Candidate Rodriguez, your next question? In your opinion, what is the most pressing issue the city of Sierra Vista should address, and how would you address it?
The most pressing issue I think we have is our business development. There's many, there's many facets to that, but our small businesses need to make sure that they keep thriving and growing. Our sales tax has been great, right, it's people in our city like using our businesses, they spend money there, so we want to make sure they keep growing and they got all the assistance they need. There's a lot of business owners out there that want to start a business, who are not sure how or where to start. There's a, there's a lot of missions to start at Cochees College, we have a small business development center there, we have the Economic Development Commission just starting up, so get some, definitely get some advice there, some knowledge from people that it's worked for in our area as well. There's a lot of, and in time with those businesses, they want, where do they start? They want good locations, but there's a lot of buildings in our area that are empty. We get that a lot, right? People ask me about these empty buildings a lot, a lot of those are absent landlords who try to work better with them and kind of push them to do something with it. Donate the building, sell it, something like that, we could use those empty buildings that are just sitting there for years, and there's a lot of businesses that want to start, and I think we put those buildings to use, people move in with their businesses or their ideas they have. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Rodriguez. Candidate Humphrey, your question? A substantial amount of focus has been placed on the West End redevelopment and parks and recreation. What other areas of Sierra Vista do you feel need the same attention, and how would you address that?
One of the ways we've been addressing it already for our roads, because, and especially this year, because the rainy season, it's been extra rainy, and we had to put more money into repairing those before they get so bad that it's more costing on us. I often joke, like when we go over the budget, I joke with staff, because they say it's our greatest asset, all our infrastructure, our roads, our sidewalks. I see that as a huge liability, because it's constantly needing more money funnel into it, and it's not like you don't put a road down, you're paying for the first lifecycle, you're paying for all the second, the third, and it's a constant need. And with perf revenue not being what it was, our highway user revenue from the state that's generated by gas tax, and more and more electric vehicles are driving those same roads, wearing and tear, and the same, same amount of wear and tear, but no less expensive to repair, that is a bigger issue, and one of the things we're doing is trying to advocate the state to get that solution fixed and better findings figured out. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Humphrey. Next question for candidate Bennin. Please name one specific goal that you want to accomplish on behalf of the city and the citizens of Sierra Vista.
Thank you. It's actually a goal I want to continue and get finished. Earlier this year, late last year, I was working with Parks and Recreation Committee, with Lauren Gilson, our Parks Director, one of the things we wanted to accomplish was getting a Parks Master Plan that laid out exactly what we wanted to do with Sierra Vista for the youth or our parks, and then they presented that to the rest of the council, I'm honored to say these two young, but these two people next to me, the lower four, and Rachel Gray, I think Greg Johnson, was getting that master plan into existence and letting us start using it. And we've already started working on it, we have a Snyder Two project coming up, this one for the Spargit, that's changing some parks, we, we, we're working on the convention park right now, adding the football courts, football courts, soccer courts next to it, I apologize. So that's one of the things I want to continue, is keeping the parks going in the direction we want them to go, keep improving our sports and sports tourism, and bring attorneys and people down here instead of wanting people to Tucson or other places to spend money, bring them down here, and it's an early school.
Thank you, candidate Bennin. Next question for candidate Weston. What do you see as the challenges to attracting new industries to the community, aside from military contractors, and what would you do to assist in this effort?
Exploring approaches to the community and the tenant organizations always going to be a challenge with legislative type actions, added matters of local, for local support here. So, and I think, I believe, because I just retired after 35 years with Cochees as a part of their board, and teaming up with the city at that time, I see a great partnership, and I want to continue with that with my experience, in helping out with the city itself and bringing in new businesses in this area.
Thank you, candidate Weston. Candidate Rodriguez, if you are not elected, what would you do to influence ideas that are important to you?
Thank you. If for some reason I'm not elected, I will stay connected to our city the way I have before, volunteering in our city, I'll do some commission work, and I've seen the great things that come out of commissions, we have a lot of great ideas that come out of those, and those are all citizen empowered entities, right? So that's where I, that's where I would be, on those commissions, still volunteering like I do now with the fire department here, doing things like that for our youth, it's very important to me as well, so I'll be volunteering with them. Where it was run the youth commission, if, you know, after I'm there, I'll make sure that that stays bolstering and, you know, that the kids stay involved, because their opinion is very important, and we need to, we need them to give back while they're here, go off and do their thing, and they come back, and whenever they're ready, to be citizens of Sierra Vista. So yeah, I would definitely give back to the community in all those ways, if that were the case. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Rodriguez. Candidate Humphrey, excluding any official city involvement, what volunteer services have you engaged in to serve the citizens of Sierra Vista?
Most recently, oh, okay. Most recently, I've been treasurer of the, treasurer of the Education Foundation of Sierra Vista, that is a nonprofit that raises funds to give teachers mini grants for classrooms to do extracurricular activities, special projects, and also to give scholarships to Buena graduate's who are furthering their education onto university or Cochise College. I've also volunteered cooking at the Neighbor Alliance, I have been a volunteer for various events throughout the city, I've been in dump tanks, I have to believe in myself for a nonprofit because I love our community, and, and that's some of the ways I've volunteered recently. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Humphrey. Candidate Bennin, how will you promote Sierra Vista as a safe place to live and visit?
Oh, good question. So, one of the things we did, the first strategic plan I got to sit down on, was the council and the mayor came together, and we decided we wanted to improve on already amazing response time for our safety providers, fire and, fire, police, and EMS. So we presented this on our strategic plan, was then got the staff and the working, and we built EMS station number four, which has been operational for one month now. So in one month time alone, and I don't have exact data, because you can't compile it within a month, but talked to Chief Jones this morning, and he said it's already improved threefold. So they're excited to give us a report in six months, we're going to get the first report from it. And that's one of the things we tried to do as a council was, was increase or decrease, if you would, response time for services, for safeties, number one thing we provide. So by increasing or decreasing, if you would, by one minute, one minute can save someone's life. So we need to keep doing things like that, we need to make sure our police, which we just did by giving them the 6% total raise, make sure our police and fire are very competitive and want to stay here. We have one of the best fire, fire police and EMS in the state, we need to make sure we keep right in service, they keep growing, and keep providing the tools and the services that they need.
Thank you, candidate Bennin. This does conclude our question portion of the city council forum. We're going to move on to two minute closing statements from each candidate. This was also determined by a roll of the die of who goes first. And candidate Bennin, you are first to go with your closing statement.
Thank you. First, I want to thank yourself, Jennifer, you're mounting the Harold's, a big part of this community, the chamber does so much for this community. So thank you both of y'all for putting this venue on and allowing us to speak to the people. K E and G, here everywhere, we thank you, our roads are really good, what we see means our roads are getting fixed better. I ran a long time ago, and a good friend of mine, and most likely looking at the audience, a great friend of a lot of you, passed away September 29th, and I'd be remorse if I didn't say thank you, Frank Esteban, who sat me down at the park one day when I was doing the thing, and said, if you're going to go big, we're going to go big. And I ran for city council. With this two listening, this talking, I kept going big, I kept trying to do more and more in the city. Right away I learned I couldn't do it without the amazing people around me, so like tonight, I'm honored to be on the stage here with two fellow council members, and them in the office along with the mayor, I can't see him because of the light. I sat next to the mayor for a couple sessions now, and I learned so much from Mayor Miller, and I want to thank him, and I hope for what I do am proud. But the reason I'm running again is, I want to keep doing what we've been doing, I want to make sure we have the best parks in the state. I want to make sure our youth have places to go and things to do. I want to make sure a person can come here and work and not just in the service industry, provide a secure job, high-paying job for the family and don't have to worry about being unemployed and not finding a job that loses security plans. So just remember November 8th, William Benning, vote for me. I appreciate it. I love y'all and be blessed.
Thank you, candidate Benning. Next up, we have candidate Humphrey.
Thank you. I want to first thank the Sierra Vista Area Chamber of Commerce and K E and G for putting this on. K E and G for sponsoring it, for y'all for hosting it, putting it together, organizing it. Um, for the Arizona Rangers for providing security tonight. Thank you for taking the time um, on your busy schedules as well for, to attend this and educate yourselves before November. Nearly four years ago, I was honored by you, the people of Sierra Vista, um, to elect me to serve our community as a member of Sierra Vista City Council. And as a candidate in 2018, I shared with you my vision for Sierra Vista, one that believes Sierra Vista can be the best city and we shouldn't accept any less. I have stayed true to that vision and I am incredibly proud of my record and what we've all accomplished together. And as a council member, I've had the honor of serving as council liaison in the West End Commission and the Arts and Humanities Commission. And currently I serve as the Chair of the Sierra Vista Metropolitan Planning Organization as a primary on the Upper San Pedro Partnership, as a board member for um, the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, as a member of the Military Communities Council as well. And I love Sierra Vista. I love our community. And when you love something, you take care of it. And this is the way I best know how to take care of Sierra Vista is to continue serving. Because I believe there's no reason we can't be the best city. And while we've made so much progress, work like this is never done. Because great cities never stop improving, every achievement is followed by another issue we have to address. And in order to stay in the right, on the right path, we need to continue electing effective leaders. And that's why I chose to run for reelection. You can look up more on my website. I've kept my record in a blog, carolynhumphrey.com. And you can read my entire platform. Thank you so much.
Thank you, candidate Humphrey. Closing statements from candidate Rodriguez.
Thank you so much. I also want to thank the chamber and our sponsors as well. Um, my friends and family that urged me to run. Uh, I got appointed, you know? They said, hey, you should probably do this because you're kind of involved in the city already doing, doing this and that. Uh, so kind of started off around some, around the table in the garage having some beers, spitballing ideas, like a lot of big ideas start, writing ideas on napkins and uh, you know, I thought it was great, you know, let's, let's do it. So we did it. And uh, I'm thankful for that conversation because here I am now, a year and three months into being appointed. Um, but this all started back growing up and I want to thank my grandfather for making me the man I am today. Without him, I wouldn't be where I am today as well. Definitely got to thank him. Um, and I want to thank our community for the questions because those came from our community. Um, and that feedback is important to us. We need to know um, what, you know, what the real issues are out there. Obviously, it's hard to be out and about in the community and I try to do as much as possible. I'm out there knocking on doors, walking in businesses unannounced, just talking to people. And I have no problem, like I said, going to your house, sending you an email, calling you. Um, you can come up to me. I'm very approachable. You can find me on social media, whether it's Facebook or Instagram or whatever. Um, I keep my business cards out there all the time. I tell people, use it, owe me a compliment, right? If I don't, if you don't get your issue fixed, circle back with me if I don't circle back with you and I'll make sure that your voice is heard. Um, I want to thank also my uh, my friends, my family, my fiance, my kids, um, all the business people out there, our, our business owners, and more importantly, the workforce out there. We're trying to keep you guys here. We want you guys to stay. I know our first responders are leaving, other people are leaving for some higher wages. We're working on that. We're trying to keep you because we want you to stay here and support our community. Um, you know, I touch on posts, so I keep, I will continue to keep my students involved in all community events when they volunteer and things like that. Um, and I also want to make sure that you remind you to look on the ballot on November 8th. My name, Mark Rodriguez. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, candidate Rodriguez. And your next candidate, Weston.
Thank you very much. Also like to thank for all who are involved in making this happen for us, that we're able to speak to this, communicate about our concerns and our outlook. In running for this position, it's a calling. And when everyone has a calling, you become a servant leader. You take your calling very seriously and you want to approach it with the best care because it's a calling and a duty for those who do not have a voice. And since I have a voice, I speak for those who want for change or development or for the maintaining. I am retired, so I have more time to vote to the seat. So I'm asking for you to vote for Bean on that day so that I can get started in the reading and catching up with those who have already planted a great foundation for the city. Protecting the results are to assist in developing the comprehensive long-range planning and to include a final goal and measurable objectives. Outcomes for this particular idea are achieved. And the expected resources development while coordinating with other agencies and or organizations. I achieve this by learning the how-to process, learning what has already been done. How can I integrate my experiences within theirs now and developing the hype of obtaining critical resources to support the infrastructure as an executive leader and council member? And that comes by being transparent and being transparent for the community. Community can understand exactly what's on the website without any question as we try to assist the city. So if you want something new, vote for me, Kevin Bedard Weston. I'll be on the ballot for November 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, candidate Weston. That concludes our city council forum. Candidates Benning, Rodriguez, Humphrey and Weston, thank you for your willingness to participate tonight. Enjoy the evening. We will take a fifteen-minute break and start at 6:35. Please plan to be in your seats by 6:30. We will continue with the mayoral debate. You can find your seats. We're going to go ahead and get started with the mayoral debate portion. Thank you. And again, we are going to introduce the candidates in alphabetical order. So first we have Steve Conroy. Next we have Rachel Gray. And Clea McCollum. Okay, so I'm going to go over the format a little bit so everybody understands. Um, we did roll the dice again for the mayoral candidates. Um, as per the order of the question, but we'll be changing the order a little bit. We'll be calling up the candidate's name. But to start for tonight's um, debate, we have, the question will come from the moderator. Candidate one will have ninety seconds to respond to that question. Then candidate two will have sixty seconds to respond. Candidate three will then have sixty seconds to respond. We have a total of nine questions this evening. So by roll of the die, the first person to answer the question is candidate Gray. Candidate Gray, you have ninety seconds. Your question is, what three specific initiatives will you bring forward to improve our city?
Three initiatives?
Correct.
First I'd like to say, does it sound like it's on? Okay. First I'd like to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and K E and G for having this event tonight. And thank you all for being here. The three initiatives that I will work on are ones that I'm already working on and continue to do so when I'm mayor. I think we have a true housing issue in our city and we need to work with partners and are working with partners such as the Industrial Development Authority and Sierra Housing Resource Partners to bring in affordable housing. Secondly, we have a workforce issue. We have, last count I saw was about seven hundred, a little over seven hundred jobs that are open in the city of Sierra Vista. And so we need to find ways to fill those jobs. And the third one is police and fire and first responder retention. And we're working on those to have ideas for recruiting those, keeping them here and making sure that we can keep our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate McCollum, you have sixty seconds to respond.
Thank you. Three issues that I want to address is first, we got to fix our rules and the policies. Bottom line, we got to fix them. The next one is we got to have primary jobs. Sixty, seventy, eighty thousand. Bring those into Sierra Vista. The next one is we have to bring our firefighters to the table. We have to recognize them, make sure they have the table so we can, we can work for them.
Thank you, candidate McCollum. Candidate Conroy, you have sixty seconds.
The three areas that I'm interested in and we've talked about before is of course the infrastructure. I would like to look at a five-year plan for both road repair as well as sidewalk repair and curb repair. I think within that five years, we should be able to get all of the cracked sidewalks in the city fixed. The second thing I would look at is I want to get the city involved, the community involved in our city. Uh, I would like to take the current program that we have in the city for cleaning, cleaning up the city and create a campaign called Shine Sierra Vista Shine. Get the city, community to join in with not just taking care of the street or an area, but also to pick up things on the sidewalk and to encourage others to do the same. I think we need to get more involvement for our community. And I think the people in the community need to step up, not expect the city to do everything.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. The next question, we will start with candidate McCollum. As mayor, how would you encourage young professionals, entrepreneurs in a more diverse community to make Sierra Vista their home? You have ninety seconds.
Well, I would advertise our community. We have a reasonable cost of living. We also have um, housing that's low to sign in Phoenix markets. We also have an excellent education system because I graduated from Boyd in nineteen eighty-four. And also, we have excellent medical care and facilities because the hospital saved my life two years ago when I had abscess on my liver. We have a slimming here, lawn hospital. And we also have land here to develop. So that's how I would market our city.
Thank you, candidate McCollum. Candidate Conroy, you have sixty seconds to respond.
I also believe that we have a great community and that we have a lot of. In fact, when I first came here, I believed that Sierra Vista was the best community I'd ever been in through all my years in the military. I think we've got some great things to offer to anybody that would want to come here. The real key is that we as a community, as a government and as a small business developer, we need to be focused on how we can make it easy for businesses to come in, get established and to survive. Because without the help of the city and for us not to be the stumbling block but to be the building stone for them to become very successful, I think that's the real goal.
Candidate Gray, you have sixty seconds.
Thank you, Jennifer. So to bring young professionals, entrepreneurs in, absolutely market our city, but what we can do as citizens and what I do as a citizen, no matter where I'm at, I am a community advocate and it's very important the words we use about our city. I don't think we are just a great city. I think we are the greatest city. And I believe that when we do things like market out to other areas, we know that we have people coming from Oregon, Washington, California, quite frankly, I don't blame them, coming here to live and we continue to reach out and market ourselves as the third most affordable city in the United States when it comes to housing and cost of living. We continue to do that, show work from home and it's quite feasible and we do things like incubators and encouraging entrepreneurs.
Thank you, candidate Gray. The next question, we'll start with candidate Conroy. The city's approximate budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three is two hundred and four million dollars. What experience do you have working with budgets and teams to ensure fiscally responsible decisions are being made? You have ninety seconds to respond.
Thank you. Uh, I've been working with budgets all through my military career. And of course, I was manager, CEO for the Coach's Cowboy Motoring Music Avenue for a number of years. And we had a budget there that we had to stick fairly close to. The thing I found out with the budget is there's a, a lot of prior planning that we budget for. We don't necessarily have the money to spend for that to line up with the budget. So of that two hundred and four million, we probably have eighty or ninety million that we'll be working with. The real key is that we've opened up the doors for potential for other uh, grants or other areas that can go after that funding for the respective areas that we're looking at, whether it's the parks or the roads, um, or additional development within the city. So I have a great, I have no problem working with the budget. I think it's uh, it's very well laid out from what I can see. I've gone through it. Um, I have some interesting ideas on it and questions, but I think we're doing a great job.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. Candidate Gray, you will have sixty seconds to respond.
Thank you, Melanie. So I, most importantly, I have ten years of working with the city budget itself and I'm very proud of the decisions we've made and the fiscal stewardship that we have shone throughout my time on council in doing things like paying off over twenty million dollars of debt a year and a half early. Those are important decisions that we've made for money that can go elsewhere. Before that, I worked with budgets in self-business and in nonprofits and grew up in a home of a self-employed man. So also had to learn, I learned early. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate McCollum, you have sixty seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm a retired O six colonel. I have managed a hundred billion dollars in my career. I have managed, I've been the COR of eight point two million for five years before I was, was retired from the army. And also, I'm currently the COO of PD Management Consulting where I've managed seven point seven million for the last five years in budgeting. Thank you. Also, I have wrote plans for budgeting. Matter of fact, one plan is still in effect and the G six here on coast. That plan I wrote by myself, budgeting for the G six.
Thank you, candidate McCollum. The next question, we will start with candidate Gray. Working with the federal government, state government and local utility providers, what do you envision as a reliable energy and water resources for the future of Sierra Vista?
Thank you. That's a great question. So working with federal partners and for what you could, of course, a federal partner, BLM is a federal partner and very proud that we signed the memorandum of understanding so that all of us together have a seat at the table. But we absolutely know the future is going toward renewable energy and clean energy. And so the city is doing things that I have, was, I had ended making a decision on, which is things like Snyder Electric, which is going to LED lighting, which is reducing water usage, going to more energy efficiencies that have saved us tens of thousands of dollars a month. That's not a year, that's a month that we've saved. And in the future, working with partners like SSBC to make sure that they have the Arizona Corporation Commission working and allowing them to fit in things like quick start gas units that will help supplement solar and to help us continue moving to renewable energy in the future.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate Conroy, you have sixty seconds to respond.
Water is always going to be an issue for Arizona. As you all know, the upper areas of Arizona- As you all know, the upper areas of Arizona are facing some serious issues with water. We have the good fortune of having a good water table, but the reality is, we're going to have to be very, very serious and very careful about how we tap into that resource. So if, for example, we were to bring an industry in here, we would have to make sure it was not a large water user. We would have to make sure that as we develop, that we don't look at just one area being supported by a hundred years of water, but how does that affect all the rest of the community in terms of that total water usage? So from my perspective, we as a city are going to have to be very, very diligent in watching how water gets in fact used throughout our entire county.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. Candidate McCall, sixty seconds.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Working with the federal government, state government, and local utility providers, what do you envision as reliable energy and water resources for the future of Sierra Vista?
Water is going to be always a issue, but we have to make sure that we have the, we have the resources as well as the knowledge how to conserve water. We need to make sure that our citizens, our constituents knows how to serve or conserve. So as we go forward, we have to educate our constituents as city officials.
Thank you, candidate McCall. Candidate McCall, you are first to light up this next question.
Bring him.
The community is under the impression that the city is difficult to work with during building and improvement projects. What will you do to improve that process? You have ninety seconds to respond.
One thing I do every Wednesday is walk on Wednesday. It's called walk. I'll be sure I go around to eighty, eighty, I go run to every business. I've been to eighty-four so far since May eleventh. I will make sure that everyone knows the system, the city of Sierra Vista is easy to work with because they will know that their mayor is connected with them, their city council is connected with them, collaborate with them, so that all of we come together and make sure that the city of Sierra Vista is top notch.
Candidate Gray, you have sixty seconds.
Oh, I thought he was not, sorry for staring at Mr. Conroy. So once again, I love all these questions because it keeps pointing to my ten years of experience and the things that I've already been working on, the things I will continue to work on. When I first ran for council back in twenty twelve, took office in January of twenty thirteen, the number one thing I heard from businesses was, one day they would hear one thing, the next day they would hear another from the city. So we worked really hard to streamline our processes so that no matter who you're talking to in the city, you're getting the same answer. We also offer pre-walkthrough so that you know what kind of expenses you're going to incur. And systematically, we have gotten more positive feedback, more and more over the years. I will continue to do that as mayor and look for effective and efficient ways to make our businesses make it as easy as possible to open a business in our city.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate Conroy, you have sixty seconds.
I'm a process guy, so the first thing I would do is make sure that we have a written process to exactly everything that a young business would have to do from getting their license to cutting the ribbon. They would be assigned an engineer or a inspector for their project who would kind of walk them through the process and make sure if there was any issues, they would know about them in advance. And as Rachel said, make sure that they aren't getting conflicting information from different people. I think also the city has a responsibility to work with the county, especially with the county health folks, to make sure that we're not creating issues for our new businesses that come from the county that we might have been able to help work through. So again, I would be looking at a way to ensure that the business has all the right steps and that they have somebody who's a partner with them in the city to work through their establishment and their growth.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. You also will start with the next question. Economic development is a major component of a viable city. Working with our healthcare providers and educational system as well as Fort Huachuca is extremely important to the success of business growth and jobs. What have you done and/or will you do to improve our city's economic viability? You have ninety seconds.
Viability is based on a three-legged stool. One of them is a dynamic community, it's built on a good school system and a fantastic medical system. I think we've got some issues on both the medical side and on the school side that really need some concentration. I think the city needs to partner with those folks and to start working to help see where the issues are and try to improve those across the board. If the schools need some help from a financial point of view, I think the city should be available to do that. But I think without having those partnerships all together, working together, if we don't have a strong school system, we don't have a strong medical system, we can't attract other businesses or activities into it. So that would be a starting point is to get more collaboration between those enterprises. The second part of that would be to also look at what areas within the city that we need to help improve. For example, we've got a large building down on ninety-two that certainly could become a Costco, but we need to approach that and try to help sell those kind of things to the big businesses. So we get both the benefit of the service and then get the benefit of not only our community, but all the way from Mexico, all the way down to Benson, to make it easy for them to come to our school.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. Candidate McCall, sixty seconds to respond.
Thank you, ma'am. I am a business owner. I own two businesses. I know how to run a business. I know how to budget a business. What can we do? We can kick the businesses that we have, know how to keep them, know how to collaborate with them, work with the business owners to pass good ordinances, good regulations that do not cripple their business. Next thing we do, we have to protect Fort Huachuca. They are our business economic provider. And also, the third thing we need to do is aggressively market our city through our website, through our social media outlets, to attract new businesses, new contracts, contract firms coming in to our city. That's what we do. Lastly, I am the only business owner on this stage. Thank you.
Just first would like to correct Mr. McCall. I am in fact the business owner, have been a business owner, and my husband and I both do own businesses.
I have been
Not at this time, but her finish the statement.
Just to correct, thank you. So economic development, again, in my ten years on city council, we have worked hard to look at efforts in economic development. One thing that we did that's been very effective is instead of looking at it in its own silo, we have opened it up and made it a holistic approach. So on the retail side, we look and we were counting the shoppers from Mexico so that the service population is a true representation of how much we have rather than just the people that live in the area and going really fast. Also, building partnerships, incubator, a true incubator with the Sierra Vista Industrial Development Authority, the Shaver Foundation, and the U of A Center for Innovation, and also looking at bringing workforce in. Thank you.
We're moving forward with the next question. Thank you. And you, candidate Gray, this question is for you. The future health of Sierra Vista relies on the relationships we form with state and federal leaders. How do you plan to build strong collaborative relationships that will ensure Sierra Vista has a place and a voice throughout the state of Arizona and in Washington? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you, Melanie. So we in the city have very strong relationships with our federal partners, our state partners, and our local partners. Individually, I think relationship building is key. Without having proper relationships and having the relationships that when I pick up the phone, our state representatives will answer because they know that, first of all, I'm calling about something important, something that's valuable to their constituents, and they're willing to talk and listen and consult with me when there's something in the state legislature or when there's something even in the federal legislature of Congress, sorry, that is important to our city and always staying in contact with them. We also have ears in the state legislator. We also have boots on the ground within the federal area with lobbyists and people that can tell us what's going on. Our partnerships with Huachuca fifty is highly important that we look at that because we have to protect Fort Huachuca. Without Fort Huachuca, Sierra Vista is very, very different. And I will continue as mayor to work on those needs, to build those relationships and to strengthen those relationships.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate McCall, you have sixty seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. As an retired colonel, I can walk into CG's office, just say, hey, sir, this is what we need. I have a working relationship with Mr. Jeff Jennings, knowing personally. I have a working relationship with the resident public, congress, congressional at Arizona State. I have a working relationship networking with those two. I do it all the time. And you see on Wednesdays, I do it all the time in Sierra Vista as well as Tucson, Phoenix, federal government, Fort Huachuca, Washington, D.C. I have that ability. I have that car that can go into any room and stand and talk to Sierra Vista.
Thank you, candidate McCall. Candidate Conroy, you have sixty seconds.
Well, I agree with both candidates. We do have to have a very strong relationship with each of the areas. And as I've mentioned, I've got some good relationships with our representatives at the state level. I think one of the things that we need to be focused on when we start looking at those relationships is what do we present to them? For example, if we were to bring convicts out of prison and they finish their terms, I would like to work with the state to kind of come up with a plan and make sure that we can expunge their crimes so they can become a full member of our community. So I think we have to ask some ideas of what we're going to actually work with those people on. For example, with Washington, I would start pushing for Fort Huachuca to become the key training center for the Southwest. We've got great mountains, we've got open fields, all the units, the military units, primarily the infantry and the armor, would certainly have great times out here for our work.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. Candidate McCall, the next question starts with you.
Bring him.
Fort Huachuca is one of the largest employers impacting more than twenty-one thousand jobs and generates two point eight six billion to the local economy every year. Hypothetically, if the fort didn't exist, what would be your plan to sustain the Sierra Vista community?
Very good question.
You have ninety seconds.
Very good question. What I'll do, is I'll go back to my platform. I have to advertise local jobs. I have to keep the businesses that we have here. I'll have to attract new businesses coming in, tell them that our housing, our housing is north of Tucson and Phoenix markets. Tell them that our schools are just exemplary. Tell them that we have great medical care. Just invite them in. We have exemplary volunteers. Invite them in to see what we have as the city, as the citizens. We have great citizens as a community. Our community is caring, loving, so that they're coming in and just vast and beautiful Sierra Vista.
Thank you, candidate McCall. Candidate Conroy, you have sixty seconds to respond.
A lot of other communities have been forced with this issue where they've lost their military base. And the reality is, if you turn around and quickly start marketing, you've got a lot of built facilities that are available for a new industry to walk in. And so depending on what industry you go after, they've got the whole folks, that they've got buildings and facilities that they can walk in and just repurpose for their enterprise. So again, as mentioned, we need to market that, we need to sell it, but we've got, it would be a wonderful resource to repurpose for any industry that we want to bring in here.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. Candidate Gray, you have sixty seconds.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'll just mention that that two point nine million that Jennifer mentioned is in twenty fifteen dollars, so quite a bit different in twenty twenty-one, quite a bit more. So first of all, let's knock on wood that never happens, and we work really hard to make sure that Fort Huachuca is viable and we are always protecting, retaining, and enhancing the missions that are there. But if that were to happen, I would look at, we have great opportunity for border patrol, we have a great opportunity for fire services, we have a great opportunity for medical facilities and medical services to be the hub, since we are the hub of the county anyway, to come in and to focus on our education services such as Gucci's College, which is one of the top ten community colleges in the state. So we would look at it helping them grow and look at options for that. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate Conroy, this question is for you. As the mayor, what do you feel your responsibilities are with state and federal representatives to continue the growth and prosperity of Fort Huachuca and its missions? You have ninety seconds.
I believe the role of the mayor is to work specifically with those representatives from state as well as with the county and to encourage the cooperation between them. I think the real goal is to look at those areas where we have crossovers and to try to make sure that they are smooth and they work well. I'm very encouraged that the city and the state are looking at the tri- township and looking at the repair of Theater Drive, which has been in need of work since I came to town. So I think there's ways that we as the community and the mayor specifically should be looking at encouraging and working with both the state representatives and also the county. Again, I applaud the city and the state for getting things going for the repair of the road for Highway ninety going down from that crossroads in nineteen ninety-two going out towards Molson Road. We're all looking forward to that one.
Thank you, candidate Conroy. Next, we have candidate Gray, you have sixty seconds.
Can you repeat the question?
As the mayor, what do you feel your responsibilities are with state and federal representatives to continue the growth and prosperity of Fort Huachuca and its missions?
Thank you. So the role of mayor is, again, what I've been doing. I've been a council member twenty thirteen, mayor for ten since twenty eighteen. And what we do is we stay in constant communication with our state and federal advocates. So I have personally been working on the state to reconvene the Military Affairs Commission and to fund the Military Installation Fund, which has not been funded since twenty sixteen, and the Military Affairs Commission, which helps protect, has not convened since twenty sixteen. So we have to have our state involved in that. On a federal level, again, we partner with the county, we partner with Huachuca fifty and Joe Corrigan, who was our consultant in D.C., to make sure that we are always very well aware of what's going on. For example, we hear that Alabama is trying to take our unmanned aerial systems. We get to work immediately to protect that and to get that stopped so that we don't lose that vital mission to our area.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate McCall, you have sixty seconds.
Role of the mayor is to work for businesses, to represent our constituents, our businesses, our small businesses, and also work for the federal, work with the federal government to collaborate with them, to build Sierra Vista, to build our community, to build our people, to build people within their entrepreneurial minds. So that's the role of the mayor that I'm going to be.
Thank you, candidate McCall. That concludes the question portion of our debate. Each candidate will now have two minutes for a closing statement, and we did roll the dice for this as well. First candidate to have closing statements is candidate McCall.
Thank you. Sierra Vista is my home and is been my home for the last forty-two years. I am a nineteen eighty-four graduate of Boynton High School, and I want to thank Boynton High School. I want to thank Sierra Vista Herald and the Sierra Vista Chamber of Commerce, E K A and G for hosting this event. It's my It's my desire to help lead Sierra Vista for the next four years. I am motivated by a single and powerful, simple idea that I might be play a small part in building a better Sierra Vista. Abraham Lincoln quote of this, "A strange and sporting, even hostile elements, we gathered from the poor winds and formed and fought to value them." That's why I'm in this race, not just to hold an office, but to gather with you, to build Sierra Vista. If you join with me, and this is probable cause, this is probable quest, if you feel the destiny calling you see, as I see, the future is endless, possibly stretching before us. If you sense as I sense, that the time is now to shake off the slumber and slow up all fear, then I'm ready, you're ready, we're ready for the cause. And I want to represent you and work for you. As mayor, I will protect Fort Huachuca. I'll fix our roads, I'll support our first responders, I'll address our veteran issues. I will, I will, jobs pays the bills for Sierra Vista. And our lives depend on growth, our jobs to make sure that we have the most business-friendly environment possible. We've been through some tough times, yes. We always bounce back because of our character, our resilience, because we pull together. And if we have, if I have a privilege to be your mayor, I promise you, I will listen to your voice. I will fight for your families. I will fight for your businesses. I will fight for our businesses. And I'll work every single day to make sure Sierra Vista continues to be the greatest city on this earth.
Candidate Gray, you have two minutes for closing statements.
Thank you, and thank you again to the Chamber, K A and G, to our moderators tonight. So, back many years ago, when I was a very young, energetic, uninformed citizen of our city, I went to a council member and said, I'm going to run for mayor. And she said, no, no, you're not. That's not where we start. You were first going to get involved with the city. You're going to be involved in the commission, then you're going to run for council. That was the very best advice I could have gotten. And ten years later, I am ready to be your mayor. I am a strong leader. I am someone who knows how the city government functions. I understand the specific duties of a mayor. I have a very well-established, great working relationship with our city, our council, our city staff, our county, our state, and our federal leadership, and our community members and leaders. And that cannot be understated how important that is. I am not someone who will be the status quo. I have fought my ten years on council against the status quo. The city staff knows the worst thing you can say to Rachel is, this is the way we've always done it. That means we need to look at it, we need to figure it out. And I have been able to be effective and efficient and make our city even better than it was when I started. So I ask for your support on the number eight, and let me vote Rachel Gray for mayor.
Thank you, candidate Gray. Candidate Conroy, you have two minutes for closing statement.
I am Steve Conroy. I'm a resident of Sierra Vista and have been for thirty-three years. But I'm a resident just like you, and I want to be your voice in government. And I'm encouraging every month in our community to get involved, to get enthused, and vote. Now, together, we can build a community we would like for our children to enjoy. Too often, I hear people say that the city doesn't listen. I know that they're doing many great things and they're trying to increase the awareness of that. But I plan to be around town and holding town forums and looking for input on our future direction. I've spoken about improving our infrastructure, and I plan to develop for the city, with the city, a five-year plan for the improvement and repair of roads, sidewalks, and curbs. And we can certainly get all of the track sidewalks fixed, at least within that time. I've addressed the West End before, and we might have some different vision of its development. For example, consider developing a satellite library or art history children's museum, or a botanical conservatory down there, all of which would draw people from our community and other communities. I want to stir the imagination and come up with greater ideas and opportunities. Much territory constrains may limit some of those new developments, but an exciting vision can be programmed for the future. You and your children are the future of Sierra Vista, and with your support, we can begin moving towards that new vision. And we as a community have a lot to be proud of, and we do have one of the best places to live in, in the United, in the United States. And with your help and your confidence, together, we can look at fixing the right things and listening better to each other. I'm very proud to be a resident of Sierra Vista, and I look forward to being your next mayor. If you want more information, please check my website at steveconroyformayor.com.
Let me have a round of applause for all of our candidates and constituents. That does conclude the debate, but before we leave, we want to thank our sponsor once again, K A and G. We appreciate you helping us put this on tonight. Thank you to our candidates for city council and our candidates for mayor for attending tonight and sharing their ideas and insights. And thank you as well to the.